All right, welcome ladies and gentlemen. Oh my goodness. Better get back here a little bit. Welcome ladies and gentlemen to the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners April 24th Business Meeting. We'll ask Mr. Krupp, our county administrator, to take the role.
All right, good morning, Mr. Chair members of the commission. Commissioner Bernard?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Ludlow?
Here. Martha Schrader has been excused. It's a reasonable reason to be excused. She is with the governor as we speak, which is a great honor and certainly an opportunity for Clackamas County. Ladies and gentlemen, you please rise and join with me in the pledge of allegiance. There is no comma after nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll retrain everybody.
Yes, you will. It was nuts.
I heard the children on that. Well done. This, the first item on the agenda is pretty much always citizen communication, and this is a rare day, you see. We don't have anybody here just to give us citizen communication. So I'd like to acknowledge the children in the audience to the bring, oh, she was just...
Oh, sorry.
I was just mentioning that. See, they're always trying to keep me straight, and that's just great. Acknowledge the children in the audience for Bring Your Child to Work Day. Now that's, it's called something different now, isn't it, Mary, actually?
Yeah, it's Bring Your Daughter and Son to Work, or Take Your Daughter and Son to Work.
Take Our Daughters and Sons to Work Day. So again, we'd like to welcome these people that came in last year, and we're going to provide a photo op. For some reason, they just love sitting up here in our chairs. Others wouldn't like it, I guarantee you. Last year, Congress dedicated the Fourth Thursday in April as Take Our Daughters and Sons to Work Day to acknowledge the program's 20th anniversary. The mission of this special day is to promote innovative strategies that empower girls and boys to overcome societal barriers to reach their full potential. You know, just as an aside on that, you well know that the interaction of children with other adults, their parents are a special situation, but with other adults is very important to their maturation process, that they can carry on a conversation with another adult and not be afraid, intimidated, and certainly be well aware of their circumstances. The theme of this year's celebration is A Plant a Seed, Grow a Future. So many county departments have planned some fun activities for the children that are attending with their parents today. We want to thank and recognize our county employees for sharing their day with their children and showing that public service can be rewarding and a meaningful career. We'd like to invite all the children up now. This is your chance now to come sit in one of these chairs, and we'll have a great photo op for you, okay?
I'm gonna go up this way.
I know, there'll be spit in it.
You gotta choose who sits in your chair, because it'll be competitive.
You gonna sit here? Can you share? We're gonna take a picture, so everyone's gotta be smiling.
Right, keep looking.
Should we invite up everybody who acts like a child?
No.
I'm here.
You know, you can squeeze in here if you wanna stand right there.
Yeah.
You get the chair. The chair is too...
Everyone squeeze together.
Oh, you're so little.
Can some of you guys come over here?
There.
How about him?
Oh, honey.
Look, he's huge. Yeah. That's funny. I know.
Let's get a big cheesy, now get a big grin on three. One, two...
Three.
Somebody finished it. All right, got them all?
Yep.
Have fun, thank you.
Bye-bye. See you later. Bye. Bye. Adios.
Please just take care of it for me. I'll let you vote and everything.
Bye, you guys. Thanks for coming. Bye, you guys.
Now, we have the public, right?
Nope, no public comments. We go straight into...
Oh, great corner. Good, that's back here on this back side of this.
Do you have cards? It's okay. If I have any last minute cards...
All right, ladies and gentlemen, you can certainly fill those. I don't see it's that competitive at all. There's open rows here in the front, open seats in the first three rows. You're welcome to come have a seat if you'd like. And we're still being recorded. I'm gonna get on with the matters at hand today. Mr. Krupp, introduce our next item on the agenda.
Yes, this first item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider a second reading of ordinance number 01, 2014, amending Title VI, Public Protection of the Clackamas County Code, and adding Section 6.12, declaring a moratorium on medical marijuana facilities, and declaring an emergency. And Mr. Nate Boderman from the county council's office is here to give a brief report, as is Mr. Mike McAllister, who's also here from the planning department to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Nate Boderman, Assistant County Counsel here. And again, with me at the table, Mike McAllister, Planning Director. This morning for you, we do have the second reading of a proposed ordinance declaring a moratorium on medical marijuana facilities in the unincorporated areas of Clackamas County. As you know, state law, specifically Senate Bill 1531, authorized local jurisdictions to declare these moratoriums on local facilities, essentially giving jurisdictions additional time to promulgate time, place, and manner restrictions that might be appropriate to these facilities as we move forward. What this moratorium will do is prohibit all medical marijuana facility businesses from operating within the unincorporated areas in Clackamas County. This is not a moratorium on these businesses that runs into perpetuity. Under state law, we are required to have that moratorium expire on May 1st, 2015, and that's what the draft ordinance in front of you does. This moratorium could be lifted by the Board of County Commissioners in the future if you so desire, or the state legislature if they make it so. This ordinance would be an amendment to Title VI of the county code. The language that's proposed in front of you today is based on a model ordinance from the Association of Oregon Counties and the League of Oregon Cities, and I will note that it's been adopted, or something similar has been adopted by about 16 counties, I believe, to date, as well as over 100 cities in Oregon. And I imagine other jurisdictions will be holding hearings in the coming days as we're running into the May 1st deadline. Under state law, we are required by May 1st to enact a moratorium ordinance if you wish to do so, and as you know, May 1st is one week from today. As I mentioned, this will be the second reading of the ordinance. The first reading in public hearing was held on April 3rd, which was 21 days ago. This ordinance does contain an emergency clause, so if it is the board's desire, the board may proceed to adopt this ordinance today and make it effective. I will point out that the date on the draft ordinance in front of you says April 29th is the effective date. We would change that to April 24th, which is the date today in the final ordinance if you're inclined to adopt that. So with that, I don't have anything additional to add, and I don't believe that Mike McAllister has anything specific at this time, but of course, we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Mike, you have anything to present right now?
I don't have any information.
Commissioners, for clarification purposes, are there anything else you would like to ask these two staff members, anything? All right. We'll get to the matter at hand, and that is a public hearing. So I'll open the public hearing. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I have about 40-plus cards, and you know, at three minutes apiece, that's two hours, not counting the transition time back and forth, not counting breaks, et cetera. And I'm willing to go through that. It is the commission's ability to really shorten this to two-minute, two-minute time, but I want to hear everybody, and as always, we have encouraged people prior to this meeting to send something in writing if they want to communicate with the commission. Certainly, we got a lot of letters, that's for sure. So we'll go ahead and start this. We're gonna start with the elected officials and some staff people because of their busy schedules, and so I will start out with, actually, a guest in this regard. I will start out with Mr. Doug Neely, the mayor of Oregon City. With him, I will call Tiffany Hick from Children, Youth, and Families.
Chair Ludlow and commissioners, thank you very much. I appreciate your taking me first. I have to be in Fort Vancouver later this morning, so I appreciate that. I would have liked to sit through this. I'm actually speaking as a member of the Oregon City Together, but I am going to give a city perspective in the process. We've already enacted our ordinance for the moratorium. We've actually banned already dispensaries in Oregon City through our business license process. This is unanimous decision on the part of the commission. Really, it's twofold. One is that the state mandate that we provide these dispensaries, when in fact, it's a federal crime to do so, we don't feel we should be mandated to sell products that's illegal to do it, or have institutions. We also feel that the state legislature erred in its process. There's other, we don't question that there's medical, there's probably medical benefits to the use of marijuana. But we have pharmacies that actually distribute morphine-based substances under physicians' request to do so. It would seem to be a better mechanism to figure out a way to have professional pharmacies to actually sell that product as opposed to go through dispensaries. So because of your time and so forth, I think that's just a very short synopsis of the reasons that the commission unanimously decided to actually ban marijuana facilities in the city of Oregon City. Unless there's a major change in the commission, next year, I don't anticipate we'll try to do away with that ban, and it may end up in the courts at one point or another. But we essentially adopted Medford's ordinance.
So a quick question, Doug. Did you make a moratorium for a year, or you just made a moratorium?
We did a moratorium for a year. We're just kind of a backup strategy. I'm sure there are many cities that are going to then try to strategize how to deal with that issue, because we're not the only one that have actually banned it. And it gives us the opportunity then to, if we think there's going to be a legal issue, the state legislature doesn't change its position on this, then we may be forced to take legal action, but this gives us an opportunity to strategize, I would say.
Okay. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mayor Neely, Oregon City. Yes, Tiffany?
Good morning, Chair Ludlow and commissioners. I work for Children, Youth, and Families of Clackamas County. I am a drug and alcohol prevention planner and have been a lifelong public servant. I come to you today to offer a few statistics that I thought you should take into consideration, and I would appreciate, I appreciate your taking the time to listen. The 2013 Monitoring the Future Survey, which is a nationwide survey, shows that high school seniors' past year marijuana use doubled, while the perception of regular use as harmful has been cut in half since the 1990s, when medical marijuana became a campaign issue. There's increased accessibility since medical marijuana has been in place in all of the states that medical marijuana is implemented. In Clackamas County in particular, 11% of 11th graders who smoked marijuana got it from a medical marijuana cardholder. To be clear, that is 11% of the students who admitted to using marijuana, not 11% of the population. 11% of the students who admitted to using marijuana say that they obtained it from a cardholder. In addition, about 68% of drug treatment patients now are from the 12 to 17 age. This is per the Office of National Drug Control Policy 2010 report. Most of those patients are in their for marijuana use. As I've mentioned before to the commission, and I appreciate your indulging me once again, my past career was as a law enforcement officer, and I think it's worth mentioning a second time, that my experience was firsthand in working in the schools with youth who regularly started telling me that they were receiving their marijuana from either a medical marijuana cardholder, or a grower, or from a friend who knew a grower. I also experienced and investigated many, many grow operations where there was a surplus of marijuana, and marijuana grow gardens where youth were getting in to steal the marijuana. So there are a lot of issues that I think need to be considered, and I'm sure that you're aware of those. I have never in my career been talked to a marijuana user, or a hardcore drug user who did not start with marijuana. I'm not going to claim that it's a gateway drug, although that's what a lot of people believe. I'm just gonna say that hardcore drug users that I have been in contact with started with marijuana. The Children, Youth, and Families Division is grounded in collaboration with stakeholders. We believe in ensuring that they are heard, that youth and families are heard. In the case of this issue, youth and families may well mean medical marijuana patients. We believe that they need to be heard, and we are very experienced in bringing these stakeholders together to have conversations. If the board decides to implement the moratorium, our prevention efforts will definitely be available as a resource, and we implement based on a public health model that includes assessment, capacity building, planning, and implementation, and ongoing evaluation. I just want to point out that we think that it's very important that you take the time, that the county takes the time, that the cities take the time to ensure that there is safe, cost-effective, fair, and responsible regulations, and that means fair to all people.
Thank you. Question by Commissioner Smith.
Hi Tiffany, thanks for coming today.
Good morning.
How long does marijuana last after it's harvested? I understand you have the leafy form, the smoked, and then you have the oil. Does it have a shelf life?
Well, I would just say that people who use marijuana are quite adept at keeping it fresh, and so there are methods to keeping it fresh for longer periods of time. I don't know the specific shelf life, but I know that experienced marijuana users do a canning method for it to keep it from getting too dry. They also use a food savers. There's methods that can be used, just like with anything, to maintain the freshness.
I'm sure I'll hear from some other folks now that I raise the question.
I think you'll be advised.
I think I will be advised. What do you know?
Tiffany, thank you very much. Appreciate you showing up today, and I'm gonna take through a couple more people.
Thank you.
Is the DA here, Mr. John Foote, who was scheduled to be here. I guess he'll be here in a little while. And so Ellen Crawford, and Under Sheriff Matt Ellington. Is Greg Horner here? Okay.
Good morning, Chair. I'm Ellen Crawford. I'm the Director of the Juvenile Department in Clackamas County, and I have provided the board with some information regarding youth who were referred to the Juvenile Department and the significant issue of substance abuse that we deal with every day. Every youth that comes to the department receives a risk assessment, and one of those domains is substance use, and we are able to determine if substance use is a primary risk factor, that youth has a higher risk of reoffending and committing more criminal acts. This last year, in 2013, over 52.9% of the youth that were referred to the Juvenile Department had a primary substance abuse risk domain. There are four additional factors that take into account what constitutes substance abuse as being that risk, and I'll tell you what those statistics are. Youth reported that 32% of the youth that were referred to the department used substances beyond experimental use. 25.3% of the total number of youth referred also used current substance use and claimed that it was causing a problem in their own lives, in school, with the law, with their family, with friends, or in the community as it related to other alcohol and drug usage. 33.4% of the youth said they began using substances prior to the age of 13. 27.7% of the youth had been high or drunk at school in the past. Not only in dealing with the youth who have substance abuse as a primary risk factor, we also deal with families that also are substance abusing. This becomes a primary challenge. One of our treatment modalities is our drug court, and we have a very effective drug court, but it is an intensive treatment program that involves the family and youth, and with youth participating up to eight or nine months. And some of you have attended the drug court graduation, and I think you're aware of the intensity of the treatment and how difficult it is for those youth and families to become This is a primary issue, you know, in the Juvenile Department and all of the youth that we have. We, I do not support, as a representative of the Juvenile Department, medical marijuana dispensaries. I do believe it will provide greater access of marijuana for the youth that we serve. We have seen declining crime rates, and we want to sustain that level of declining crime rates. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Under Sheriff Ellington.
Good morning, Chair Ludlow, commissioners. I'm Under Sheriff Matt Ellington with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. I'm not here to throw out a bunch of statistics, but I just wanted to say that I think it's appropriate for the board to regulate time, manner, and place of these dispensaries, and that as the sheriff's office, we're committed to working with the board, should you pass this ordinance to ensure compliance with it. So we will dedicate our resources to the county and assist in compliance with this ordinance, should the board so choose to enact it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you both. And so next, we have the Assistant District Attorney, Mr. Greg Horner, who's in the room.
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, my name is Greg Horner. I'm the Chief Deputy District Attorney with the DA's office here in Clackamas County. I'm here in support of the moratorium, and first of all, would like to reiterate Mr. Foote's testimony. He spoke to the board, as I'm sure you recall, in the previous session, and I'm not here to reiterate his concerns, but I do want to make sure that he spoke for the office and for me personally, in terms of his opposition to the dispensaries starting now, or actually in support of the moratorium. And I think Mr. Foote went through some of the historical perspectives of what's going on with drug enforcement, as well as some of the policy choices that have gone on previously, and we're very much supportive of the board's choices to move ahead with the moratorium. There is one, there's actually two points that I want to emphasize. The first is that there's a conversation going around the entire state about marijuana and where it fits. This is just one of those many issues that are coming up in the broader conversation about what's going to happen in the state of Oregon with marijuana. And I think the correct approach to this is one of caution, and one of stop and look and see what is going on in two other states. We have two states that are actually embarking on this social experiment about legalization of marijuana. Why would we rush ahead when we can wait and see from the results in Colorado and the state of Washington? Now, there are advocates, there are folks on both sides of this issue that want to make predictions about what's going to happen. What are the risks? What are the benefits? Why would we move ahead at this point in time, when if we wait generally about what's going on in marijuana in Oregon, we will know, we will know. What are the risks to youth? What are the risks to the public in terms of traffic fatalities? What are the risks as far as expanded use in our schools? Those questions will be answered in some period of time, whether it's a year or two years, by looking at Colorado and Washington. So it is a time now where the prudent people, which the commission represents the county, the prudent approach is to go slowly and to be cautious, and then we can see what happens from those two other states. The second point is, we're still learning about the impact of marijuana, and I've provided you a copy of an article in the Washington Post that talked about a recent study of even moderate marijuana use and its impact on the brain. I think it's another example of why we should be cautious in this case. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Mr. Horner, thank you. I appreciate your input.
Very nice.
And that includes anybody that would be a dignitary or resemble that, or has claimed to be that. But now we're gonna get into the public ones. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna call you up in twos, and if you come up here with great dispatch, and I'll put two on the deck as well. I'm not gonna sort these pro con, anything like that, but I'm sure we can all just get along fine. Now, again, please be, if you want to take less than three minutes, that's appreciated. And really, as you go along, whether you have a card in or not, why don't we just allow this? And if you agree with that speaker, and you agree not to speak, and want to forfeit your time, if you'd let us know that, that you can forfeit your time, because that person really encapsulated everything he wanted to say, that would be great, and again, shorten all of our stay here today. So anyway, I appreciate us wrapping this up today, but we have a lot of cards, and here we go. The first two are Roy Burge and Sarah Kimes, followed by Constance Kimes and Shirley Morgan. And when you testify, folks, just give us your name and the city of where you come from, or something like that. Don't give us full addresses.
You want me to go first?
Either one of you can go first.
Speak into the mic.
Let somebody go ahead.
I'm Roy Burge, and I've been in North Clackamas County since '44. And John, I'm gonna try to keep this under three minutes, if I can. I'm pushing Senate Bill 1531, obviously, because my good friend Rod Monroe put this together, along with a lot of other colleagues, and I'm for the bill 100%, and I can understand you guys studying it over in the moratorium to figure it out, okay? So I'm all for that. I'm hoping to use 1531 as a tool to fight the legalization of marijuana in my state, okay? And if we do what we're supposed to with it, I think it'll help, okay? It'll stump out any ideas for legalization of the drug. And people pushing for it, they're just looking for money to line their pockets, okay? We don't need that in our state anymore. And if you consider our kids, you legalize it, and you're the same as saying it's okay, and it's not okay. You guys know it, and I know it, okay? That's all I have to say.
Well said. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Sarah Kimes, and I live in Clackamas County. I am a mental health professional, certified with the state of Oregon. My official title is Pure Wellness Specialist 1. There are two levels. I'm in training for the second. And I've been working as a volunteer with the National Alliance of Mental Illness for a little over four years. I am a family member of someone who uses medical marijuana, and I have seen this person both with and without it. She has a mental illness. She has a mental illness and a physical disability, and is on social security. She is benefit, it is very beneficial to her to use this medicine. It's really helped her with her anxiety. She has a diagnosis of anxiety bipolar disorder and post-traumatic stress disorder. It has helped her be able to branch out in her community. It has assisted her in being able to live her life more fully. And for her, it is something that means a lot. It's something that she needs to continue her treatment. And I'm not speaking for the mental, the full mental health community. I'm here representing my mother and myself. And from what I have seen, it's something that should stick around.
Thank you.
So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next up, again, are Shirley Morgan and Constance Kimes. And then after that, it's Lori Norman and Daniel Hewson. Hewson. All right, either one.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Shirley Morgan from Welch's. Nice to see you again. I have three area of concerns. Number one is the lack of enforcement. Enforcement by OHA is almost laughable to think that two to four compliance officers could bring compliance to over two-hundred-and-eighty-one marijuana facilities. HB thirty-four sixty allows children in these facilities in the lobbies and waiting rooms. HB thirty-four sixty allows non-background-checked cardholder employees to smoke marijuana while on the job. These facilities be working on a cash basis only, opening up the door for potential crime and law enforcement costs. As District Attorney Lacy told Governor Kitzhopper regarding HB thirty-four sixty, although regulating marijuana facilities in your state may be a noble endeavor, legalizing marijuana sales through the storefront model is not the answer. The Los Angeles Police Department reported a two-hundred-and-percent increase in robberies, a fifty-two-point-two percent increase in burglaries, a hundred-and-thirty-point-eight percent rise in burglaries from autos near these facilities. Number two, marijuana is still a federally illegal drug. The FDA has never deemed smoked marijuana as medicine. Governor Kitzhopper, when he signed HB thirty-four sixty, noted that nothing in this law protects dispensaries, growers, caregivers, and cardholders from federal prosecution, nor will it protect any landlords who lease or rent to these facilities. Number three, impacts to our youth. According to Clackamas County Mental Health, of the two-hundred-and-forty-one kids under the age of eighteen who went through county treatment programs last year, eighty-seven point five percent were there for marijuana addiction. In closing, the majority of Oregon voters said no twice to marijuana dispensaries in this state. Once with Measure Thirty-Three in two thousand and four, again at Measure Seventy-Four in two thousand and ten. It's also disturbing to hear requests to grandfather in existing illegal marijuana storefronts, which is certainly disrespectful to the thousands of other businesses in Clackamas County who operate legally. For the safety of unincorporated county of Clackamas, I implore you long-term to prohibit marijuana facilities, as well as approve a one-year moratorium to prohibit these facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley.
Shirley. Yes.
Hello.
That's insane. Thank you. It's okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Constance Kimes. I have been a medical marijuana patient for four years. And up until this last year, where I became associated with a dispensary, even as a patient, I had difficulty getting my product legally. The growers don't always provide as required by the law. Therefore, I want you to understand how important it is for those of us who are patients to have a place like the Maritime as a dispensary to pick up our prescription, which has been tested. It is clean. It is safe. You have to show ID to go in there. It is, I've never seen a child there. Never. In two and a half years have I seen a child there. I don't know where people are having children at dispensaries, but it's not at the place that I go to. So if the state of Oregon is going to say that I can have medical marijuana, then the state should provide a place for me to get that. Simple as that. I can't grow up myself.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. As mentioned before, the next ones are Lori Norman and Daniel Hewson. Lori Norman. And the next ones after that is Robert Sweeney and Craig Segurs. All right, either one of you, please.
Hello. Nice to meet you, folks. My name is Dan. I want to let you guys give a brief history. I started smoking at eleven. I had an older brother.
Can you come a little closer to the microphone or pull it up towards you, Dan?
Okay. A little bit of history about me. I started smoking at eleven. I had an older brother influenced me. At the age of thirteen, when I graduated eighth grade, I started flying airplanes and working on them because of my mother. She took me up to the airport and had me explorer flight. Long story short, I smoked marijuana my entire life since I've been eleven. I have my aircraft pilot's license. I'm a mechanic. I'm a machinist. And I currently have, am employed with a very large corporation that I've been there seventeen years. I've got top security clearances. They love me. Responsibility is key. Now, I started growing in two thousand and four when I got sick. I had a appendectomy inside my spinal column. I started growing for myself and other patients. I got up to where everybody and their brother was wanting me to grow for them because their growers were not providing like they said. It got to the point where I couldn't grow for any more people. I couldn't, you know, be responsible. So what I did was I turned around and I decided to open up Mount Hood Wellness Center. We opened up three years ago down on one-hundred-and-forty-third and Stark Street. We now currently have forty-five-hundred-plus members that come to us regularly. We do free hospice care all over the entire state of Oregon. I just want, don't know if you guys know or not, but there's fifty-nine thousand one-hundred-and-eighty-three medical marijuana patients in the state of Oregon as of four-one-of-fourteen. Clackamas County has four thousand three hundred and eighty. It's the fifth-largest medical marijuana cardholders in the state of Oregon out of thirty-three counties. You guys have the fifth-largest. Denying patients' access, safe access, is not a very good thing. You're pushing them away to send them to another county, another place to drive, to try to go find their stuff. I also have a laboratory, Rose City Laboratories. We do testing for all of Oregon or any dispensaries. The dispensaries that are here today or that are operating are doing it legally. We, we know the spotlight is on us. Oregon has said that as long as we meet the criteria of a thousand feet of a school, a thousand feet of another dispensary, as long as we meet the zoning requirements, we're good to go. Why would it be any different? I've been going three years. You guys have my personal number. I would love to volunteer, show you all, walk through, walk each one of you through my dispensaries, my laboratory, anything I have or own. I have nothing to hide.
Thank you. And again, ladies and gentlemen, if you could really end on. If you could end as close to three. You did a good job, by the way. Thanks for wrapping up. You knew it was coming. That's all right. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Lori Norman. I also am a medical marijuana user. I've been suggested by my doctor to use it. I've used it, and it's replaced other harsher medications that upset my body. Many pain medications slow down the digestive processes and leads to, what can lead to very serious complications with constipation, which will happen to me. So I've used it for back pain. I also am a mental health patient, and it helps me through periods of anxiety. A couple of things I want to say is I am one-hundred-percent against the moratorium. My career is as a nurse. I've been a registered nurse and worked in the medical field for over three decades. And one of my last jobs was in hospice. I wish I could tell you what it meant to patients when they got to use medical marijuana. The medicines that doctors are giving them weren't doing any good at all. All they did was, matter of fact, made them sicker. Their loved ones, out of necessity, because the American, Western medicine can't help them, went to marijuana, medical marijuana desperate. They were desperate for something to help their loved ones, and they got it, and they gave it to them. And if you know the happiness of a person that can get out of bed and sit in a chair for a meal, to look across the bed and see and recognize a loved one for the first time, you'll see what medicine really is. That's a medicine. And I haven't just seen it once. I've worked in medicine for a long time. And I really hope that you will not put this moratorium on and put, as we've heard, thousands of people in limbo. Please don't do that to us. This is a medical issue. Let people have their medicines. I realize there's lots of other issues surrounding it, but I'm sure they can be overcome. One last comment, as I hear, some of the businesses have been licensed by the county through the Sheriff's Department, Department. It really doesn't make any sense to me to stop a business when they're already been approved. I know of one place that is an integral part of a small business complex. Out of that complex, it's only, out of seven, two are closed. If the dispensary closes, two more are closed, and possibly even, and that will hurt the businesses and that. But primarily, I'm for medical use, and I really hope you would allow the patients to get their medications in a safe, legal way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next comes Lori Norman and Robert Sweeney, followed by Craig Segurs and Desiree Duval. So Lori Norman and Robert Sweeney. Oh, was that you? I duplicated myself. I apologize. We'll put that one away. Mr. Sweeney, and let's call forth then Greg, Craig Sedkers, please. Yes, go ahead.
Good morning, and thank you for the chance to speak up.
Got to come real close to that microphone or pull it towards you.
Good morning. Thanks for the chance to let us come in and talk to you. I wrote a speech, but rather than do that, I just want to caution you, please. When people start spouting statistics and it's done in a general manner, it's usually in a form of bias.
I still can't, can you come a little closer to the microphone?
Sure.
Thank you.
Do I, should I repeat that?
Yeah, I think so, if you don't.
Well, the point I was trying to make was, is that when statistics are used for an argument, it's usually in a biased manner. I'm not prepared with statistics today, but I can tell you as a forty-year user, I've never even been brought into court on anything more than a traffic ticket. To try to restrict something like this is not going to stop marijuana use. What you're going to do is drive it into black, into the black market. And this is one thing that I'm afraid of, because then you really do, you present that to the children on a black market scale. They're going to go to the guy down the street that's selling it, and that's where they're going to buy it. That's, that's all I have to say. I just wanted to address the statistics because that doesn't always tell the whole story.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. My name is Craig Segurs. You got it closer than most people do. I'm a cardholder. I have injured a back, my back, a couple of years ago, and I broke some ribs last year. And, but I'm here, you're going to hear plenty of case histories. I'll spare you one more. As a parent, I'm a single parent. I have a fourteen-year-old daughter. I have raised her properly. She understands that those bottles of cannabis tincture are no different than those little orange bottles full of Vicodin and Percocets. For the folks that did not raise their children, to deal with this responsibly, maybe it's not the kids that need education. These parents need to start approaching this in the right way.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, I really appreciate the applause and everything, and I ask you this. Save it for the end of their testimony, at least. If we continue to interrupt my applause, it'll just go on and on and on. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
You owe me seven and a half seconds.
I know, and we will give it to you. I swear.
And it's, I understand it's a serious issue. You know, I mean, she's getting ready to go away to college, and so we've had the talks. And the, most parents seem to take the attitude, we need to prevent this being, our children being exposed to this. Well, they're being exposed to it, and if they're telling you otherwise, they're lying to you. The way to approach this is to have them deal with it responsibly, like I have with my daughter. Now, she's fourteen, she's going to go away to college. She wants to be an astrophysicist at MIT. And I've already told her, I said, well, as mad as I would be walking in your dorm and seeing a bag of pots sitting there, I would be a lot more madder if I walked in and saw beer bottles stacked against the wall. This is a big issue, but I, I think they need to redirect the way they educate kids on this. They've been blowing it for years. I was raised in the fifties. I'm going to be sixty-two. None of that forbidden fruit stuff worked. No. It didn't. It's not going to work this year.
I was there. I agree with you.
Okay, moving along here. The, oh, I should have brought my glasses. I've heard all these statistics about marijuana abuse and everything. You can apply the same thing to alcohol. Every tavern in this country was built to give people a place to go to abuse alcohol. I haven't had a drink in ten years. That's why I went there. It's a socially acceptable disease. You could apply the same thing to this. And when these folks want to get up here and say, we should ban alcohol for these same reasons, I'll start taking them seriously. Until they do that, cigarettes. You can get cigarettes, you use them according to the manufacturer's directions, it will kill you. And I hear no one complaining about that. But most importantly, what I, I came here for is, oh, damn.
Seven, you got seven, yeah.
Okay. I'm against the more to begin, you're missing an opportunity here. It's like learning to ride a bicycle. You want to know what happened in Washington is they kept kicking this can down the road, and it's going to be legal on June third, and it's total chaos.
Seven's over, really.
Yeah, start, yeah, start dealing with this now, get used to it, and by the time it's legal, which is going to happen, you can say, we got this. It's under control.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So it is Desiree Duval and Mario Mamoore. Go ahead, either one of you.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Desiree Duval.
A little closer to that microphone, please.
I live and work in Clackamas County. I work at Maritime Cafe. It's a dispensary that has been operating for two and a half years. I've worked there for that two and a half years. We were licensed through the county when we first opened. I, when I first started, I was really sick when I started working at the cafe. I have a disease called Marfan syndrome. I also had an infection in my breast. I was on a lot of pain pillers, painkillers. I barely got out of bed. And I found medicine in marijuana, and I found a safe place to go get it. When I got there, I didn't have the money because insurance doesn't pay for that prescription to get it. And I started volunteering to help get medicine. And later, I am now the manager. I work forty hours a week. I am not on any pain medicine at all. The only prescription I am on is marijuana. I am not here asking for no moratorium. I am asking for you to amend the current moratorium, to not include businesses that have been existing and following the rules that are already set. We are licensed. We do what we are asked. And if you have any other concerns, I invite you to come see us, to ask us to see how it works. We're always willing to change. We have tons of patients that need help every day getting medicine. We see it help them. They come see us. We have over two thousand patients in Clackamas County that need help. They need a safe place to get medicine that's been tested, that doesn't have mold, mildew, pesticides, and has the potency on it. We also give them choices so we can help them pick the medicine that works best for them. Whether it's for pain or nausea or seizures, we have the selection and the knowledge to help them pick what's right, not just some baggie from some guy on the street that you don't know what's in it. I would encourage you to come see us, to see how it works, to I would encourage you to come see us, to see how it works, to see what the inside of a dispensary looks like. It's not a basement, it's not a garage, it's not scary, it's inviting. We check your ID, we check your OMP card, we make sure that you're over eighteen, we make sure that you have a medical reason for needing it. We also make sure that you're not getting an extreme amount every time you come in, that you shouldn't be needing to help. We monitor to make sure our patients are using a safe amount. So please, just amend the moratorium to not include existing businesses. Help us, help you find ways of opening hours and signage and all of those things. We're here to answer questions and talk to you, and figure out what'll work and change to anything you have.
Commissioner Bernard.
Actually, I have a question of Mike and maybe Nate. It was mentioned that the county had already licensed the facility. Is, my understanding is the county does not have any facility licensing for anything, except perhaps restaurants and, and facilities like that. Can you answer that?
We, the county does not license medical marijuana facilities.
I, I will add, there are general building licenses or building permits that, that any business would go through if it's necessary for tenant improvements, things like that. But as far as business licenses go, there are none for this specific use.
So it's not reviewed by the sheriff? It's not reviewed by any department? Facilities that distribute marijuana, there's no process in the county to do that?
That's correct. The, the citing of them is a, is a land use issue, like any other person that wants to operate a retail pharmaceutical sort of company. So it's a zoning issue, and certainly in the context of the medical marijuana program that was originally adopted, the county is obligated to, if somebody applies for a permit for a certain type of use, whether it be commercial, industrial, multifamily, residential, the county is obligated to make a determination on whether that use itself is, is in the appropriate zoning district. So that's the, the limitation, and certainly meeting any sort of building code requirements and handicap access, ADA access, those sort of things.
Okay, thank you.
We, we are well aware that there are facilities out there who got permits to occupy for retail. But again, there is no authority to give any kind of permission on the county's part, especially through planning and zoning, for any kind of medical marijuana outlet. So, thank you very much, and yes, you'll get your time right away. Yes, you're up now.
If I might respond to that question, would it take my time up?
I wanna come close to the microphone again.
If I respond to that question, will it take my time up?
You will, you've got three minutes.
All right, thank you. My name is Mario Mamoni, and good morning Chairman Ledlow and other commissioners. I'm a retired federal employee, I'm a senior Vietnam veteran and a member of Clackamas County. Maybe most importantly, you need to know that I'm the owner of Maritime Cafe Medical Marijuana Dispensary, that's been operational in Clackamas County for two and a half years. We applied to the, through the county for a business permit, an occupancy permit, which also required us to submit a letter of the actual activity that we were gonna be doing. We worked with the county to make sure that we met all their requirements to have a medical marijuana dispensary. And at the end of that time, they gave us a permit, an occupancy permit, to have a medical marijuana dispensary. I have all the documentation that I sent to the county describing our actual business. If I may continue. And that was back in April two thousand and eleven. And September twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven, Clackamas County gave me an occupancy permit to run a medical marijuana dispensary. I've been told by other people that I opened a risky business. I don't agree with this, and let me tell you why. If I had not gone to the county and asked them for a permit and just opened up and snuck into the county, that would've been risky. My landlord required me to have approval from the county before he would allow me to sign the lease for that building. I got the approval from the county. And I believe I sent each of you a five-page letter that included the occupancy permit from the county. I also assumed at the time of my application that the county planning department notified all appropriate departments and individuals in the county, from the county to commissioners, to the county council, to the law enforcement officials. And to add to that, for three years, we've had a permit with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Department for an alarm permit. They responded to a false alarm at our business three times. We've allowed them into our business to see the layout in case there ever was an emergency. So as you can see, from a business standpoint, I took all the risks out of opening a medical marijuana dispensary in Clackamas County by working with the county. I would also say that because for the two and a half years that the county must have known about it, at all administrative label, levels, including the enforcement officials, that they gave me implicit and explicit authority to run a legal business in Clackamas County. They had plenty of opportunity in that two and a half years to say otherwise, they never did. I think today is a great opportunity for the commissioners to make a historic vote, to modify this moratorium to allow existing legal state-operated business that have been authorized by the county to operate, to continue to serve the patients and the community. Thank you for your time, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. The next two are Tracy Hoffman and Abigail Wells, followed by Elizabeth Russell and Summer Murphy.
I'll make this short. Thank you Chair Ledlow and Commissioners. I came before to speak, I think it was April third, at the last public hearing, about the concerns that we have about youth, and I do so, and I plan to do so again today.
Tell us your name again.
Tracy Hoffman, sorry. I'm the Vibrant Future Coalition Director, and our coalition is, we are tasked with preventing substance abuse among youth. And so, our group is actually comprised of law enforcement, parents, school members, youth, and healthcare professionals and other different nonprofits and agencies in the community. And I think you were able to receive some statement cards yesterday from some youth from Rex Putnam, and just kind of how they feel about the different peers that they've seen struggle with marijuana use, and some of their own experiences that they have gone through. We are concerned about enforcement and the capacity and the funds for enforcement and compliance check. If you read Governor Kitzopper's signing statement, he, he said, "It is critical to set fees for dispensaries that will provide sufficient funding to OHA, the Oregon Health Authority, so that they can be extraordinarily vigorous in their enforcement of the rules that are developed." Even our governor is concerned, and in his closing statement, he says this. "It is my hope that these goals are not achieved under, if not achieved under House Bill thirty-four sixty, as written, that its sponsors will be open to fine-tuning the legislation in the future sessions." The Amendment fifteen thirty-one C gives you the opportunity to fine-tune and really set down a foundation for the future of what this will look like in our communities. We need to be able to protect our youth, and that is our biggest concern here today. Just so you know, Colorado, their enforcement group is, I wanna say, at least twenty, if not more, people to enforce throughout the state. And so with only two to four enforcement for the state of Oregon, that really concerns me as far as what the access to the youth will look like. According to the two thousand and twelve North Clackamas School District Student Wellness Survey, of the twenty-nine youth that had reported smoking marijuana in the past thirty days, thirteen point five percent reported getting from an OMP cardholder. The social cost of early use can be measured in lower academic achievement, higher dropout rates, expulsions, and suspension of youth. With Oregon's graduation rate for two thousand and twelve at sixty-eight percent, do you really want to make it harder for these youths to achieve success? Now, I'm just mostly concerned about what the access to youth will look like, and so I just ask that in the future, you keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. You're up. Go ahead.
Hello, Chair Ledlow and Commissioners. My name's Abigail Wells, and I'm the Vibrant Future Coalition Coordinator, as well as a Certified Prevention Specialist in the county for about five years now. I am here today, not as a proponent or opponent of the medical dispensaries, but representing the coalition that is concerned with keeping it, the marijuana, out of the hands of minors. Bear with me as I look through some of my chicken scratch. I'm here to advocate for keeping the youth in our community safe, and if this moratorium is passed, it'll allow more time for the counties and local governments to come up with rules and regulations. And we have a naturopathic physician that sits on our coalition, and she pointed out some of the medical benefits that come from the CBD in cannabis, that have possible medicinal value. But the THC in medical cannabis currently has no regulations on potency. They have to test for it, but there's no regulation on how much that potency can be. We are concerned around the time, place, and manner in which cannabis is dispensed, so it does not impact our youth's perception of harm, and does not normalize it for recreational use. Somebody mentioned alcohol and tobacco and the, that they're legalized, but they also have things like underage compliance checks, warning labels, a percent of alcohol that is allowed in the bottles and things of that sort. We understand a lot of this requires parents to find safe ways to keep and store their medical marijuana. That's been brought up a few times, is the importance of parents and education. But this doesn't all fall on the parents. It falls on community members, and that includes prevention professionals, dispensary owners, medical marijuana cardholders, law enforcement, that should all be working together to keep youth safe. And the key in that is together. It takes a village, is a thing we've always heard, and that's such an important phrase to consider here. We in Oregon have been very lucky that we can learn from other states that have already have these dispensaries in place. For example, if the dispensaries are open May first, here are some restrictions that California has in place that Oregon's temporary law that is read now does not. Such lot location is not within one thousand feet of a park, library, or recreational area. It's not within a thousand feet of any preschool or licensed childcare facility. During all hours of operation, there should be at least one uniformed security guard present. Use or consumption of any manner of marijuana is not permitted on the premises of any medical marijuana facility at any time. No operator or employee of medical marijuana dispensary shall have been convicted of any felony or under state or federal law. So those are things that are not in place in our temporary law. The temporary law came before you guys very quickly. Basically, I just wanna give you guys the facts and bring to your awareness what others have done.
You gotta treat everybody the same today, so you really gotta have to wrap it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next comes Elizabeth Russell and Summer Murphy, followed by Susie Tracy and William Estanbisson? Estan, no, I did bad on that, apologize. Yes, go ahead.
Good morning. My name's Elizabeth Russell. I'm here representing Oregon City Together. We're a coalition devoted to building opportunities for a healthy and drug-free future for our youth in Oregon City. And I wanted to acknowledge you, Chair Ledlow and Commissioners, for taking the time to consider some of the unintended effects of kind of moving into a world that we're not familiar with, that we don't quite know yet the, the effects of. And I, I wanted to just comment, one thing that I want to acknowledge is that Oregon voters did put into effect medical marijuana in nineteen ninety-eight. It's been legal and accepted statewide ever since, and we do have a medical marijuana program that created provisions at that time for cardholders to get the supply that they needed. What I'm hearing is that that program doesn't work. And there's dispensaries that are coming in, and the argument for it, the concern that I'm having is, is if our program that we put into effect isn't working, and people are concerned about black market and clean supply and tested product, it tells me that we put something into effect that we weren't ready for and that had unintended effects. And I think that the same situation applies with the dispensaries. We need to take the time to look at what is possible as a side effect of putting these into place if already a program that we all approved isn't working. Specifically, I would like to remind us all of what happened in West Lynn. There was a significant bust, it was the largest in their history, last winter. What was happening was the Medical Marijuana Grow site was being tended by high school students. They were paid with marijuana. That marijuana and those students were selling that marijuana to their other students in every grade level at West Lynn High School. And the thing is, we wanna prevent that from happening again. We need to understand how to do that, and I think the best, this isn't about whether or not medical marijuana is valid and makes the difference in people's lives. This is about how do we parse out the unintended effects of something that mayor, that, you know, has been kind of passed in Oregon. So if, if at all possible, I, I think that working together with, with growers, with cardholders, people who I think really also want to protect the access, protect youth from the access. Now, the other thing to understand is that we have to link the perception of harm that is plummeting in Clackamas County and statewide and in Oregon City to the, additionally to the normalizing of marijuana use, this parsing of recreational and medical and youth and adult use is something that's unfinished and incomplete in our social dialogue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you very much. Yes.
So I just want everybody to see, this is my son, he's fourteen.
Uh, microphone, can't hear you though.
He goes to Gladstone Cracksburger. On the ninth.
Your name, please.
After school, my name is Summer. On the ninth of, this is gonna be hard for me, so I might break up and start crying. So my son, after school, went to a friend's house. They had a planned, they had gotten into the parents' alcohol stash. What had happened was this. My son, one hour after school, was unconscious and losing his life in front of every single kid that was there, because they did not know proper alcohol awareness. Nobody has taught them proper alcohol awareness, because that has gone bye-bye in the last three weeks, I have discovered. There is no current drug and alcohol awareness program in general for our youth, not, not prior to getting in trouble, it's after. When you have a broken family, when your child is already in trouble, that's when the awareness steps in. There is nothing prior to them having an accident. My soul was ripped out of me. My son didn't start breathing until twelve-thirty that night. He went into acute respiratory failure, one hour after school. None of his friends called the police. They were scared to call the police. All of us parents are all banning together. I have the district behind me right now. I have met with Gladstone Youth Coalition. I want all dispensaries to stay in operation, I want them to pay a yearly operation fee. I want that operation fee to go directly to a drug and alcohol program that is current for our youth, not twenty years old, not the DARE program, a current problem. We have twenty-five eyelids floating around, we have flavored cocaine that's floating around, there's fentanyl that's floating around and lollipops. Who's looking at this and who's teaching the kids all this? We have heroin. Who's teaching the kids that is the difference between black tar heroin and the dabs that are coming out these days? Nobody. There is no drug and alcohol awareness program in effect. If these dispensaries are left to stay open, they can pay an extra fee every year of a thousand bucks to bring in resources for every single school district in Clackamas County. And if Clackamas County doesn't do this, they can make a whole entire change for the whole nation. You can build the roadway for every single school awareness to have a program in, there's no, there's nothing unless your child is sitting in health class. There's nothing. I have done the digging, I've talked to MAD, I've talked to trauma nurses Talk Tough. They don't even get used the right way in the court system for kids that have alcohol problems. My son does not drink alcohol on a normal basis. He had a one sixty-six alcohol level. He chugged a glass of vodka like a pop. Nobody taught him the difference between a beer and a drink of alcohol. I'm a non-drinker. He knows that I'm against alcohol. He's seen what alcohol does, but nobody has taught him or his friends what alcohol does to a person when they ingest it the wrong way. We have bars for days in Gladstone. There is nobody teaching the kids not to drink.
I think you did real good for having butterflies. All right. So we have Susie Tracy and William, whoever's name, I messed up last time. Thank you. And followed by Sean Myers and the Reverend. And followed by Sean Myers and the Reverend, Lynn Marie Pezzi? Sorry about that, too. Go ahead.
Good morning and thank you for your time. My name is Susie Tracy. I live in Estacada, Oregon. I've worked in both recovery and prevention, and I'm here today to ask that you exercise your power to enact a countywide moratorium on marijuana dispensaries. On Wednesday, April 14th, the Estacada City Council joined forces with 150 other Oregon cities in enacting a moratorium against marijuana dispensaries. To date, at least 24 of 36 counties have done the same. As a former marijuana user, I can personally attest to its negative effects, slower reaction time and ability to absorb, process, and retain information, impaired judgment, and lowered inhibitions. As the mother of an addict, I can personally attest to the anguish of watching my son become a walking dead person. I watched him lose his job, his family, his wealth, his health, his future, and his hope. Marijuana was the first drug that he used. Cocaine was the last. As a cancer survivor, I can personally attest to the fact that no medicine can completely eliminate the excruciating pain of being eaten alive. Thankfully, medicine and science continue to make incredible advances to help make an unbearable circumstance bearable for those of us who experience the horror of horrible disease. Medical marijuana, as it's currently termed, was already legal in Oregon and has been since 1998, and the medicinal quality of marijuana has been legally available in prescription pill form since 1985. This FDA-approved pill, known as Marinol, does not contain the mind-altering components of smoked or ingested marijuana. Taxation invites competition from organized crime and challenges professional ethics. Tax money won't pay a fraction of the social, economic, and legal costs to society. We will all be impacted by the legalization of drugs, but the individuals most vulnerable to the consequence of legalized drugs include our children, the disadvantaged, and the mentally ill. Illegal drugs are not dangerous because they are illegal. They are illegal because they are dangerous. Making them legal does not make them less dangerous. I used to be too busy to care about politics, public safety, and community health. I'm not too busy anymore. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. Now pronounce your last name, please.
Thank you, Commissioners and Chair. My name is William Estebson, and I'm sure as you guys all know and seen over the last several weeks, and I'm sure your assistants have received many phone calls and emails from many of your constituents supporting medical marijuana. The key word here is "medical." We're not talking about legal recreational marijuana. And it's been said over and over by the opposition here today, legal recreational marijuana. We're talking about medical marijuana, and I think that's where we need to stick to. I have firsthand seen brain cancer, somebody who was supposed to be dead, a family member, within 90 days of being, found out they were, they had stage IV brain cancer, and they started using marijuana oil, and they're still alive three and a half years later. Their doctors can't believe it. It's pretty clear to me from the last meeting on the 3rd that a lot of you folks didn't read House Bill 3460, and I hope you have since. There's a lot of laws and rules and regulations already set forth in that bill to keep the medicine out of the hand of the child. Drug dealers don't card. Dispensaries do. You gotta have several pieces of ID just to get into there. It will actually keep the cannabis off the streets. There's no doubt. If prohibition has failed before and it's failing now, and this is a medical marijuana situation. I think denying access to these patients, as you guys have it written, undermines the state's intentions of House Bill 3460 to provide safe access to these patients. There's a lot of people out there, and there's a, the program was mentioned not to be working properly. The reason it's not working properly is because there's no safe access centers. That's what's going on. These safe access centers will clarify and clear the air on all of that. We are regulated. We are well-filmed, all the way through, security systems, and the whole nine yards. I got another 40 seconds. I am asking you guys, please, to allow these already state-licensed facilities to stay open and provide safe access to some of the most vulnerable of patients. I am also asking to form a committee to help steer this program to meet the needs of both patient and non-patient, with law enforcement, dispensary owners, the community. We're all concerned. We're all concerned on doing this properly. In closing, I'd like to remind you that medical marijuana has been legal since 1998. Until now, there has been no system in place to provide this safe access. Everything's going back to the black market. Also, we've been advised by attorneys and several other dispensaries that are here that there will be legal litigation that will cost the county lots of money and also us lots of money to get this clarified. Thank you.
Thank you both. Sean Myers and the Reverend, I apologize, is it Lynn Marie Pezzi?
Lynn Marie Pezzi.
Yes.
My name is Sean. I'm from Sandy, Oregon. Came from Multnomah County and now being a part of Clackamas County, living in Sandy, Oregon. Just want to stress the importance of this meeting today. None of us would be here if we did not care. I do believe that is the first and foremost thing to be pointed out. We should be able to have intellectual conversations and debates about this topic. This is something that has been legal since 1998. Dating since 1996, we have 21 legal states in this country that are doing the same thing we're all doing. They've already gone through the same conversations we have done. There are 12 states pending. At what point should we draw the line and stop making parallels between things that have no bearing on exactly what we're trying to do here? We can't stop what's going on in the country. We're not going to change social trends, but the alcohol problems, the tobacco problems, there's no reason to bring up gateway drugs anymore. That is old conversations. That is old rhetoric. That is no longer valid.
Microphone, can you, come.
Just want to further stress that these are conversations, debates, that have already been done. Other states have already done this. If we want to compare recreational states such as Colorado and Washington, that's not, that's not moving us in the direction that we should really go to. Statistics can often be led in the biased direction, so I don't really want to point out any other more than 21 legal states, 22 if you count Washington DC, 12 have legislation pending. We should probably start to pick up where the ball is being left off and determine, as a county, should we override our own state law? Should we displace all of the patients who are going to have to go somewhere else and get it? Because it is clearly noted through states of California and others, the crime rate actually does go down around dispensaries. Why? Because it's regulated. If you don't regulate it, you will displace crime and every other person that's trying to seek legitimate medicinal help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Reverend Gina Marie Pezzi. I am a product of the streets. I come from violence. I come from poverty. I had to fight through the system. I had to educate myself, eight years, two degrees. I've been ordained since '02. Through my experiences as a social worker, as a pastor, as a human being, I have seen fear, I have seen politics, and I have seen greed be used as a weapon to deny compassion and mercy to people in need. I'm here to also speak on my own case. I lost my health and my mobility about six years ago. I went to my doctors for help, and I was given prescription after prescription after prescription. I lost my mobility. I ended up in a wheelchair. I ended up 530 pounds. I suffer type 2 diabetes, fibromyalgia, PTSD, insomnia, morbid obesity, and GERD, among other things. Last year, Kaiser went medieval on the way it treated chronic pain patients and others, often being categorized as addicts or drug users, seekers, or mental health cases. I was taking 60 milligrams of methadone every four hours, among nine other prescriptions. I would not do it this way, but it was the only way I could find to do it because I was not living any longer. I was lethargic. I was going from my wheelchair to my bed, to my lounge chair, depressed, unable to function, on social security disability after working my butt off to get where I was because I wanted to be a productive member of community and society. I went to my doctor two days ago. I have lost 280 pounds. I am walking, I can stand up out of a wheelchair since September. My blood sugars, my A1C is down from 11.2 to 6. The nurses and the medical staff will know what that means. I have educated myself on the history, on the politics, and on the issues around this. Please do not use fear, politics, and greed to continue to limit access for mercy and compassion. Thank you.
I was going to ask Reverend Pezzi what church she's ordained in. And by when you're coming up, congratulations on your weight loss and your determination to take your health into your own hands.
I am ordained by the ELCA through the Oregon Synod. I am not currently sanctioned. I am on leave with...
What's an ELCA?
Evangelical Lutheran Church in America. I am not sanctioned by my church at the moment because I am technically on leave for disability. Again, another layer of issues that prevents me from being productive.
That was a simple question. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Lindsay Reinhardt and Matthew Sanders, followed by Richard Holston and Patricia Rodriguez.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for revisiting this again. I've just been here listening, trying to figure out, you know...
You gotta tell your name.
Lindsay Reinhardt. I'm in Happy Valley. I was here on the 3rd and on the 17th. I've just been listening today on the different concerns that were being brought before you, and I've heard youth is mainly the main one, and then the regulation of time, place, and manner. So really, what I'd like to say is, drug dealers don't check ID. Putting forward a moratorium pushes children and the rest of the community into the hands of dealers. March 3rd, we, as the 45th parallel, and nine other dispensaries in Clackamas County submitted applications to the state to have a legally licensed Oregon dispensary, and those applications are in the process of being granted or have already been granted. I really think the best thing that we can do in this situation is grandfather-in the dispensaries that applied on March 3rd, let us open business if we haven't already, or let the people that are already open continue to be open. Form a committee to hear from everybody involved on how to protect the children. Let the people that are providing safe access provide safe access, and let us help you. We would like to help you, too. I almost find it offensive that people in this room think that people in the cannabis community don't want to protect our children, too. I really am on the verge of being offended. I have an 11-year-old son. I don't want him to be on cannabis either. He's not a medical patient. To sit there and assert that we would give cannabis to children that don't have an OMP card is not acceptable. The dispensary that we want to open and the dispensaries that others are opening do not cater to children. Minors are not allowed in dispensaries under HB 3460. We're not going to have children in our facilities or be dispensing to children. The other thing that I wanted to touch on is compassion isn't political. I read that on a button once. I'm a Christian, and compassion always has touched my heart stronger than just about anything, because that's what I live my life by. And to assert that we don't have compassion for the most vulnerable part of a community, the sick, the disabled, and that we're not going to let them, and I'm just gonna say it, have God's medicine? He created it, put it in the Bible, and told us to use it, and we're not going to have compassion for the people that need to have a medicine, the plant that was provided by God? I don't want to be back on pills. I told you guys, 22 pills that I'm off of, 22 pills, that I don't take anymore because I use cannabis. You know, that's huge. That's huge. You know, we made a sign that said, "What if I close Walgreens?" You know, we've talked about taking away cannabis, but let's talk about taking away Prozac and Vicodin, you know, things that people are really dependent on that hurt them. You know, this just can't continue.
Ladies and gentlemen, again, everybody, everybody who speaks has a clock right in front of them, and you know how much time, so please try to end on time. I'd greatly appreciate that, and it'll help everybody to be heard today. Yes, sir?
Sure. Hi. My name's Matthew Sanders. I'm from Happy Valley. I spoke last week at the meeting. I'm a Cornell University graduate, environmental economics major, and I just would like to first say on record that I would never get involved in retail, anything that was harmful or to a community. I became literally obsessed with the research in the last couple of years. The internet has literally opened the doorway. For example, Dr. Melamed at the University of Cairo to disseminate his information. And in fact, I'm really kind of flabbergasted that it hasn't hit the mainstream media more in this community. CNN runs a one-hour special, Dr. Sanjay Gupta. This medicine has been around for over 3,000 years. It's been listed in the Chinese Pharmacopeia for 2,500 years. Our founding fathers grew hemp. The Constitution was written on hemp paper. This medicine was a huge part of American Pharmacopeia in the 1800s. I really think that people need to be internet-savvy and find this information. There are reputable scholars and physicians backing this information up. And I'd also like to add that the members of our existing dispensary have, we have come here to provide services for this community pro bono and to employ the people of this community in a free market to be taxed and regulated. We have over 15 cameras. We have more cameras than Walmart. There's no one getting in there that doesn't have a card. And I think we need to look at this plant and look at the benefits that it can bring to humanity. It was also said that, it was commenting on CBD. THC has been shown to cure cancer by way of apoptosis in lab rats. There's a, the government has this patent on it, 1970. It's a Schaefer report. It's 1974. We really have to educate ourselves, and it's our due diligence. And I think a moratorium at this point, when frankly, the people that have the experience of this plant out here providing the information, a moratorium should not be in effect at all. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you. Again, Patricia Rodriguez, Richard Holston, followed by Justin Orchesoski. Oh, I know, I missed that one. I apologize. And Cindy Bankston. Yes, either one, please.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Rodriguez, and actually, I do have a few notes here just upon, just hearing what everyone has, what everyone has to say. I lived in Cambie for nine years, and my family is still in Clackamas County. I am currently a resident of Portland. As a resident of Portland, there are numerous dispensaries, and I have tried to frequent as many as I can. I am a medical patient, and from what I've seen, very clean, everyone's smiling, nobody angry, there's nobody, it is not like a tavern. There's nobody, it is not like a tavern. It is not dark. You do not see vomit in the bathroom. There are not fights and murders outside of a dispensary. What we are hoping is that it'll bring revenue in, just so it can help. And the way that it can help drug abuse is to stay away from calling cannabis a gateway drug. The proper name of it is cannabis. Marijuana is a term that Harry Anslinger and others, that they created to offend Hispanics and to get people afraid and to not to ingest this drug, to take it. There are many ways. Also, from what I've seen, a lot of the children, the teenagers that have been caught with cannabis, they are forced into rehab. That's one of the reasons why it is so high. My son, they tried to force my son into, into, into one of the schools that all the kids in trouble go to, and he was caught with cannabis two years ago. He is now, he's a talented musician, a very talented drummer. He sings, and he has very good grades at his school. And he's very, he's very smart, and he's very happy. And a lot of it was because earlier, when I was diagnosed with all the surgeries that I had, I was put from morphine delaudid, fentanyl, methadone, all of them, and high blood pressure, all of that. It almost destroyed me. Cannabis has saved my life, and it cures cancer. Google it. And thank you very much for listening, and I hope for compassion.
Hello. My name's Richard Holston. A little bit about me. I'm a molecular biochemist. I've got many, many, many years of valid quality control testing experience. I manage quality control testing facilities. I now am an owner-operator of a very valid quality assurance, quality control testing facility. I'm here to only represent quality control and quality assurance because the way I look at this, and I would like to also educate not only you, but just the public on this whole marijuana thing, it is just a medicine. And so if it's being manufactured under a GMP protocol, which it seems like this community is saying is being done so, well, then it could also be tested underneath good laboratory practice protocol, because the House Bill 3460 initiates ISO 17025 compliance for the labs. Now, my laboratory is above and beyond that compliant quality. So as just, I can't remember the gentleman before me, mentioned a pharmacopeia. I am just here for quality assurance and quality control. This isn't marijuana. It's not pot. It's not dabber. It's not all this taboo BS. What it is, is it's cannabis inflorescence. And there is a monograph. And a monograph is something that in the food world, such as the FDA world, a purified ingredient such as vitamin C has a monograph. It gives people like me and people like you regulatory guidelines to write up laws that keep your community safe, your patients safe, and also the manufacturers of the products and the labs. It's simply QAQC. So if you want to look at what's going on and compare it to vitamin C, or these food products, or nutraceutical products, or pharmaceutical products, view it as such. Manufacture it under a GMP process, test it under a GLP protocol, and then therefore it is just medicine, just like all these crazy opioids that, all these stats, yeah, people want to throw out stats. There's more statistics saying that there's drug addicts abusing prescription pills, teenagers stealing weed from their parents. I'd rather my son, who is here today, who is five years old, steal some cannabis out of my medicine cabinet than some dilaudid, or some OxyContin, or some Xanax, or all of these other medicines that you guys are trying to say have no risk of abuse? My best friend in the world, you know what started him to become a heroin addict? His doctor gave him a pain prescription. So let's just treat it as it is. Let's do valid quality assurance, quality control that keeps the community safe, that instills regs for everybody to be safe.
Commissioner Smith? No, you're done, sir. You're really done. Commissioner Smith? You know, this is the kind of thing that makes me have to recess meetings, ladies and gentlemen. And I'm really sorry it might get to that because of people who think their time is more important than anybody else's. Commissioner Smith?
I just want to make sure that the folks out there know that we have not advocated for the use of any drug pharmaceutically prescribed as FDA-approved or anything else. We're merely considering a moratorium on medical marijuana facilities. I have a question for Nate. I've heard it several times from the testimony, talking about House Bill 3460, but in essence, we are trying to implement what we were directed to by the state legislature with Senate Bill 1531. What is the reference to House Bill 3460? I don't believe that passed.
3460 did pass.
No, whatever.
As far as I know.
I can clarify that too.
Is it recess time again, ladies and gentlemen? I mean, that's the last time. We'll take a recess and sort this thing out, come back and talk to you. Again, your time's more important than everybody else's. Let's have some decorum, please. Thank you. Nate?
What we are considering here really goes to 1531 in that we're regulating, or talking about regulating, or imposing a moratorium on the placement of facilities, really the business aspect and not the underlying substance, which I believe, I haven't looked at 3460 in a while, but I think the substance of that bill really had to do more with marijuana itself and the program.
So what we're considering, just to, I was shouted down rudely, which I haven't shouted any of you folks down. I've let you say what you wanted to say. And before I was so interrupted, we are considering the effects today, the legal charge of Senate Bill 1531, not House Bill 3460. So any testimony on 3460, what it may have done, is not our charge today. So if you want to have credibility before us today in what we are specifically looking at, you might want to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Justin Orczowski. Come up and tell me better. We got a microphone. Cindy Bankston, and followed by Hillary Sweeney and Jordan Terrell.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Sergeant Orczowski, Justin, US Army retired. I have never seen, in the 10 years that I've been active in politics, and in the sights that I've seen in the military with, especially through the-
A little closer to the microphone. I'll give you two or three more seconds here.
Especially with the issues that are facing soldiers with PTSD, TBI, and as well as the soldiers right now going through the Warrior Transition Brigades. I can tell you firsthand that prescription medication isn't the way to go. Medical marijuana may not be the way to go. There are all alternative therapies out there for people who need them, and that's fine. What I see as a failure, though, is that how we cannot come together as people, as a community, and actually keep beating a dead horse over and over and over again. Tax dollars can be put to somewhere else. Yes, there's good things about medical dispensaries. Yes, there's bad things about it. But the simple token is, is that right now there are a lot more issues out there that are suffering. And as for our kids keeping safe, of course, everybody wants their kids keeping safe. Our kids, and our kids' kids are gonna be the next futures of this country. Everybody wants our children safe. Nobody wants to expose them to danger. But here in America, I have never seen ever an adult, a parent, hold up a hash pipe to a kid's mouth and say, "Smoke it," on the street. I have never seen that. Here in America, I have never seen people so pissed off where they throw rocks at tanks. I have never seen that either. The only lowest form of poverty I have seen is a vengeance on a couple homeless people. I have never seen people where they're living on rags, eating diseased meat, diseased water. But yet, issues like that don't really need to come up here, do they? The only thing that people are worried about is medical marijuana, which honestly, if it helps somebody, that's great. If the community's not for it, then that's great too. But if there are some members in the community that are for it, then let's have a democracy. Let us bring each other together, and let us solve these issues together. And that's all I wanted to say. Ladies and gentlemen, board, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead. Hello. My name is Cindy Bankston. I'm from Boring, Oregon. I live and work in Clackamas County. I vote and pay taxes in Clackamas County. But I am here today on behalf of those who work in prevention with youth. There are many prevention specialists who are here in this hearing room right now. One year ago to the day, today, we were here and we met with you. We were here on the day when people brought their children to work, and we were here and we told you about the prevention work that we're doing in Clackamas County with youth. And you all said, "Who wouldn't support the work that you do?" And you said, "How can we help you?" And I'm here to tell you today that you can help us by adopting this moratorium. You can help the youth of Clackamas County by adopting this moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you. And now it's Hillary Sweeney and Jordan Terrell.
Hello. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Can you hold on for a second? Ladies and gentlemen, if you wish to exit this room, could you please take the back door until the proceedings are over? Again, try to use the back door when exiting. I greatly appreciate that. Thank you. Go ahead. We'll start the three-minute clock again.
Okay. I'm not going to take up all of the three minutes. I'm just going to briefly, first, I'd like to say thank you for taking the time to listen to me talk. And my name is Hillary Sweeney, and I reside in Clackamas County. And I also had the great opportunity to be able to be full-time employee for the Maritime Dispensary in Clackamas County. And I know for a fact that there are a lot of patients out there that need these places to stay open, and we deserve that as medical marijuana patients. We need a place to be able to go get our medicine safely, and it would be great harm to the community to close them. That's all I really wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. Chairman Liddo, fellow commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to speak today. My name's Jordan Terrell. I work for a local nonprofit, working to reduce poverty. I took time out today to come to you. As a working professional, Clackamas County resident, and as a father of a young son, more access means more usage. I'm concerned about this moratorium in terms of if you do not pass it, what is that gonna look like for the county in terms of children? So my hope is that you pass the proposed moratorium in an effort to step back and gather a greater due diligence during this one-year timeframe. Clackamas County residents, and especially our children, deserve laws that have a foundation made of concrete rather than sand. My suggestion is create an advisory committee made up of community-wide stakeholders, including a Clackamas County commissioner. I feel strongly that only with your direct buy-in and greater understanding with Clackamas County, truly can you be able to find a way to fine-tune, I believe a woman said earlier, the existing laws and build a collaborative education on this issue. If marijuana is medicine, why is it not subject and controlled to standards of practice and policy, just as other drugs are in a local pharmacy? How is the current law enforcement involved, and is their current capacity sufficient? What added safeguards need to be in place to greater protect our children from marijuana substance abuse? These and other questions need to be addressed. While I'm not a prevention expert on this matter, I'd like to share just a few stats, and I can source every one of these stats. In 2006, the total direct economic costs-
Excuse me for just a minute. Mary, could you freeze the clock? Folks, if you want to carry on a conversation, you're gonna have to do it outside of this room, if that's only fair, okay? Thank you.
Or the overflow room.
Yeah, the overflow room. You can have a great conversation. Sir, go ahead.
In 2006, the total direct economic costs from substance abuse in Oregon totaled approximately $5.93 billion, with a B. According to SMART approaches to marijuana, for every dollar the government receives taxing harmful substances, it spends $10 on social costs. And my last stat, according to the 2013 Youth Behavior Survey, 20% of Clackamas County high school juniors used marijuana within the past 30 days. I'm here because I care about the community that my family and I live in. Commissioners, please buy time to limit access to youth. As I said before, if unchecked, more access means more usage. More marijuana usage by youth leads to lower graduation rates, higher costs for Clackamas County, and an overall greater family instability within Clackamas County. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Dave Murray, Don Olson, followed by Kate O'Kiley and Sylvia Hormich. What's that?
I'm against the change of regulations.
Well, we're just mixing them up. Whoever I call.
You want to go, or you want me?
Either one of you can go first.
My name's Dave Murray. I'm a lifetime resident of this area. I'm the great-grandson of pioneers. I'm generations of war veterans, including Vietnam.
Thank you.
All right. The kinds of injuries I have from my service, the government doesn't even want to talk about. The kind of medications I've been prescribed, I will never take again. I've been through too much, too many times. I've used marijuana for about 43 years now. I grow my own. I purchase from dispensaries that I consider to be clean, straight, honest, with a quality product that we can depend on. Medicine that has been tested and chemically free and for potency. I am otherwise drug-free, a drug-free veteran with injuries that would require stronger medications if I did not use marijuana. I feel that ejections to marijuana are not well-founded, that when people can find a benefit from any substance, they should be allowed it, not outlawed. I've had marijuana stolen from my property, the perpetrators caught by me. But my stolen property not returned or compensated for as promised by Clackamas County Sheriff deputies. The Maritime Dispensary has had food and clothing drives. And I'm out to sum it up here. I don't know if I dare say what I have to say about people in government, judges, police, Craig Roberts and his conduct, and his deputies. I have filed with the Federal Bureau of Investigation about them. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is it. I'm offering a $1,000 campaign contribution to anyone that will run against Roberts for sheriff. Thank you.
Well, that's a heck of an offer. Thank you. Yes, sir? Yes, sir? Thank you.
My name is Don Olson. I'm from Dundee, Oregon. I have never used marijuana in my life, and I don't intend to use marijuana in any time in my life. But I have, as a physician, seen the effects of marijuana used on patients who I've had. I have, I'm trained as, I'm retired now as a neurosurgeon. I'm trained and specialized as a pain specialist. I have treated thousands of patients with chronic pain. I know that what's in our bag that we use for patients doesn't work. I've never been so aware of this as I was in February of this year, when I took care of my wife dying with cancer at one of the hospice units here. And I learned from the other side, not being a physician, but being the husband of someone dying, that there's inadequacy in the program. Something better needs to be done. Cannabis appears to work. I don't think it's the answer. I don't think it's the solution to anything, but I do think it's a start. I think the issue here is medical marijuana, and I don't think it should be swung over to anything other than medical aspects. It's a medicine. The pharmacy- The Pharmacy Board for the State of Oregon has said, and put out an opinion paper, stating that it should be a Class II drug, which I agree with. The Oregon Pain Commission has come out with a policy statement saying more research should be done, but it should go and be looked at as a medicine. There's a lot to be done. It should be done. And I'm here to speak primarily as a husband who believes that people, namely my wife, people need something. And you need to start, and shutting the door solves nothing. And putting forth a program that can have a rational approach is everything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kate O'Kiley and Sylvia Hormich, followed by Mike Mullins and Rainelle Flor.
My name is Kate O'Reilly, and I live in-
I didn't, it didn't look, the top is closed.
And I live in Lake Oswego. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak. I'm 70 years old, and I have had and still have numerous conditions which I take allopathic medicine for. I am currently taking 11 different medications, running in costs from, per each one, from $10 to $230 each. Many of the conditions that are made, many of my conditions are made worse from the side effects. Dizziness, as well as depression. And that has, over the time that I have been taking these medications, has declined, you know, quite a bit. Medicare and my private insurance have paid more than $400,000 for my care in the past two and a half years. All I want is to feel better. And I had the opportunity to try a medical marijuana cream that I was able to rub on my back, and it made a huge difference. I've also had a couple of puffs of marijuana, not a chronic user. But anyway, that has helped. It's helped relieve my pain and helped me to sleep. My observations of the medical marijuana dispensaries in Clackamas County are these. Creating a moratorium for medical marijuana dispensaries in Clackamas County only pushes our tax dollars, revenue dollars, off to other counties. And I know that you're always asking for money. And so, so I must say, here's an opportunity for you. Going through the process of becoming a medical marijuana cardholder isn't as easy as you might expect. First, it's obtaining your medical chart for the past three years. Mine, by the way, is five inches thick. Then a patient has to find a doctor who will approve the card. There are very specific requirements to obtain it. Then the patient forks out $300. And quite frankly, an elderly person or a very sick person has a difficult time making that payment. I'm still saving for mine. After all, oh, oh, sorry about that. After all that, now it is finding a dispensary in your local vicinity to buy what you need. Not buy what you want, but buy what you need. It is medicine for so many people, not a street drug. In conclusion, I guess I would continue to, I could continue to make doctor's appointments and make them and pharmacies rich. Or I could come and use something locally that is locally grown, locally handled. Please consider continuing to allow medical marijuana dispensaries in Clackamas County. Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sylvia Hornick. I live in Gladstone. I have three grown children, five grandchildren. I was diagnosed with fibroid malgia in the 80s, degenerative disc disease. I've literally been in a wheelchair five times. 20 years, I took care of all of my medical needs by what the doctors told me. Everything from problems with my heels and my feet to migraines. My entire body has been ridden with pain. I watched my ex-husband, a drug addict, an alcoholic, lose his hand in an accident back in the 80s. I will never take the methadone that they wanted to give me again and again. I take medical marijuana after 20 years of every therapy, every way they could do it. I'm only 52. Do I have to be on prescription medication till the day I die? Or can I take an illegal medical way that I don't have to take all the pills? Remember in China, Tylenol's illegal? You know? It really depends on what you think of us elderly becoming people and what we have to do to survive with our pain. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mike Mullins and Rainelle Flor. Rainelle left? Okay. Cindy Fincher.
Oh, she left also.
All right. Michelle Barnes. There you go. Okay. Yes, either one of you can start.
Hello, and thank you. Good to see you again. Mike Mullins, I approached you on the last meeting in regards to this subject, and have already given testimony and sent a number of pieces of paperwork. First of all, I'd like to say, as being a consultant to over 50 dispensaries that have been operating in Oregon for over three years, I can tell you that not one of those particular locations has ever had any issue whatsoever involved with crime, involved with picketing, graffiti, or anything else. In fact, they've been very good neighbors and very well-liked in their communities. Banning these legal businesses does not remove the crime. It simply sends people out into the street, and these are people that are our neighbors, that are elderly people, that are baby boomers. It's going to be forcing them, if they can't go to a legal outlet for it, it's not going to stop the flow of marijuana or cannabis on the streets. It's simply going to make nice, legal people criminals. I'd like to bring to your attention that the federal government does, in fact, manufacture and distribute marijuana as medicine. There is a patient right here in Clackamas County. Her name is Elvina Sika. She has a federal prescription that is prescribed by a doctor, a federal doctor, where she receives what is considered a lot to most people, but she gets a quarter ounce a day, furnished by the federal government, and has been on this program for over 29 years. The National Institute of Drug Abuse actually operates this program and distributes it to four living patients that are existing on the program. They have spent the last 29 years trying to find what the negative effects of cannabis are, and their statement last year was that they had not yet found any. So, just like to have you keep that in mind. And also, as we go forward, we would like to see this process pushed quickly forward in order to be able to open these clubs to our members and to the people in the community that need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Barnes. I am a resident of Milwaukee, Oregon, and also the co-owner of Little Amsterdam Wellness Center. We are a full-service wellness center. We have a full-service dispensary, as well as a gentleman with his master's in Eastern Medicine, acupuncture, and massage therapy. So we are not just a dispensary. We do offer additional services to our patients, but primarily, we work with medical marijuana patients. We have been open for approximately three weeks. We do have our state license. It is posted on our board. We have our alarm permit with Clackamas County. And we did go to the zoning commission prior to opening to make sure that we were in an area that was for retail use, that we were zoned in the proper use. We did go to your website to make sure that we didn't have to apply for a business permit. So we did our due diligence before investing $120,000 into our business, because we believe in what we do. I've also brought some sample packaging of the stuff that comes out of our, if I may.
Oh, just what we need today.
These are all considered childproof. They are all labeled with the patient's name, the brush that is in it.
Nothing you're saying-
Yeah, we're not meant to hear what you say. It's best to go back there and to the seat. We'll definitely return this to you. They're empty.
They're empty. It's not empty. Well, that one's not empty.
All right, yes.
They all are in childproof, resistant packaging, as are required. To be qualified as childproof packaging, it cannot be opened by more than five children under the age of five years old out of 20. The pop tops, while easy for adults to use, have been difficult for children to use. That's how they are considered child-resistant. The, all of our syringe or CBD oils become packaged in products that have to be opened with scissors. Everything gets labeled with the patient's name, the product, where it was tested, all of the test results for it, and all of that is kept on record, along with every single sale that we make to a patient that is recorded in our POS system for the entire life of that patient's history. We have kept everything in thousand-pound safes, in safe rooms behind three locked doors. So it is not something that is going to be easily accessed. And we are doing everything according to state rules. House Bill 3460 allowed us to open the dispensary according to all of the rules, and we have followed all of those rules and invested our life savings into something that we believe in. I watched my father die from cancer, 60 pills a day. He went from 400 pounds to 175 pounds.
Yeah, hold on.
My husband, the co-owner.
I appreciate that, but really trying to hold that back. Go ahead, one last sentence.
So what we're asking is not that you don't impose the moratorium, just that you grandfather in these facilities that are already existing and licensed with the state, so that we can be your test subjects, and we can help you.
All right. Thank you both. We are not, we are not accepting blue cards any longer, just for your knowledge. We have Cara Berant. And, oh, I guess I'll wait with the last one. Let's just use you. These other two want to come up together, and that's fine. So, come on down. Got to go. Thanks. All right.
My name is Cara Berant, and I'm an Oregonian for five generations. I live in Oregon City, and I have lived in Oregon City for 19 years. I don't know why there are all the problem with the kid thing, because you can drive down the street and see a dispensary, and kids probably don't even know what it is, honestly. But you can drive down the street and see a liquor store, an X-rated store, and kids know what that is, because usually it says nudity or XX-esque, right? I'm just, the nanny laws that we're trying to, I thought we were trying to make sure that dispensaries can be here for patients like me that need accessibility to medicine. If, you know, because we can't, not all of us can grow for ourselves. My daughter wanted me to say that marijuana is only illegal because the timber industries didn't want to lose money back in the day. Anyway, so I just wanted to say that we wanted to keep Clackamas County dispensaries for patients that need it. And I don't think kids really know what they are, and they don't have accessibility to get into them, unless they have their OMM card and they're 18. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Has Cindy Encher or Rainelle Flor come back in at all? They're both gone, all right. And the last two cards I have, ladies and gentlemen, are Tracy Hoffman and Abigail Wells.
No, you already-
I did that?
Yeah.
Huh. I'm done. We will now close the public hearing, and because of the hour, and you're welcome to stick around, we're going to take a break until 12:30, at which time we'll come back and deliberate on this. So this meeting is recessed. All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome back to the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. This is April 24th. We took a 20-minute recess. And now we're going to return to deliberations on this ordinance. So, commissioners, discussion about this and questions of staff? Comments?
Sure, I'll go first. One thing that kind of drives me crazy in this state and in others is our dependence on sin tax. You know, tax it, and then the money isn't spent to resolve the impact, whether that's public safety or addiction counseling or whatever. You know, it's no question in my mind that marijuana is going to be legalized in Oregon at some point soon. It's happening across the country. We have two great examples of states who are the experiment, as far as I'm considered, for all of the other states to watch and see how things happen. You know, one of my biggest things that really made me mad when I was mayor of Milwaukee is that if a little grocery store got caught selling alcohol to a kid, and they went to reapply for a license, we couldn't stop it. We had no say whether that person got a license or not. And I think that if we look over these issues and consider some of these, we might be able to have that opportunity. So liquor stores would apply for, or a grocery store would apply for a liquor license, and they would change the name into the husband or the wife, the one that didn't get a drunken driving or didn't get caught selling alcohol. And then there was nothing we could do about it. The Liquor Control Commission gave them a license, whether we opposed it or not. I think it's important that the county have the ability to take part in that decision-making, and that the Sheriff's Department should have some ability in, you know, looking at the record of the person who might have a facility such as this, and consider whether they deserve a license or not. And I realize that the state law does allow that. So, you know, somebody said there's, it's good things and there's bad things about dispensaries. And I think the important thing is that, that's true. We need to figure out what they are. What are the good things? What are the bad things? And I don't think there's any question that there's benefit to cannabis for health reasons. Spoke to my doctor the other day, and her grandmother, who was, it was a grandmother aunt or something like that, who, who used to take many medications, couldn't even recognize you when you came in the door. Now is, she's in her 80s on marijuana, and she has no problem recognizing. She can cook her own meals and do all those things on her own. And there's definitely a benefit. But I think another comment made was, it's a social experiment. Washington and Colorado are definitely experimenting with legalization. But again, this is not an issue of legalizing marijuana. It is an issue about medical dispensaries. I like the mayor of Oregon City. Wonder why, if it's a medicine, it isn't sold in a pharmacy? And one of my other problems is, is that a medical marijuana card, and I don't know if there's a difference between one that can grow, maybe if you get a, or one that can get a prescription. I don't know if there's a difference. But I know that, I went out on parole-probation visits, and you'll be in that home with somebody who is not allowed to have alcohol or marijuana or any drugs, and when the sheriff goes in there, there's the plant sitting right there, and the guy, his roommate, has a license to grow. So it seems rather odd to me that, that, I mean, that the guy who's not supposed to be around it can live in the same house with the guy who has a license to grow it. So it's a, it's a concern that we ought to look at that issue and how we can solve that. I think somebody else said that, you know, there's a rational approach to how we make this decision, and this moratorium doesn't mean it's a year. and this moratorium doesn't mean it's a year. It means that we need to take a little bit of time. And, you know, for the folks who have invested money in dispensaries, especially those who recently did, it was obviously a gamble. And I'd love to visit a dispensary, so I have some understanding of what that is, and yours too, many of them, just to get some idea of what it is that we're talking about. I know that Milwaukee opened one for a short time, you know, right on River Road and McLaughlin, and it was gone very quickly. My understanding is that something else was going on in there. And so that's the other thing. There's a fear that people have that we need to figure out a way to either resolve it or, you know, let it be known that it's in fact the truth. There is a fear. And we need to work at that and take some time and look at it. In the state, frankly, I think the legislature were a bunch of wimps. They didn't decide this on their own when they had an opportunity to do that. Instead, they left it for the 36 counties and all the cities in the states, in the state, to figure out how to deal with this, when in fact they could have done it. But actually, I somewhat like the fact that we can talk about how we're going to do this rather than have the state tell us how we're going to do this. And that my main issue is that, like a liquor license. You know, the cities and counties should be able to say, well, you have a criminal record. You've placed this in a site that we don't agree should be, there's one every 1,000 feet, which just seems crazy to me. You know, I was listening to, I think it was in Seattle, that there are so many marijuana businesses that the others are trying to figure out ways to sell more through different marketing concepts. And so it just seems that if we're going to do this sometime in the future, which I personally believe will occur at some time, we need to figure out how to not only make those businesses successful, as we try with all businesses, but also how to control and how to say no when it's appropriate to say no. So that's all I have to say for now.
You want to go? All right. Well, I'll be glad to say.
Okay. We have been charged with trying to implement Senate Bill 1531. I agree with Jim. I think the legislature hates counties, hates county government. They should have taken care of it. You know, they should have at least not done it in a short session to try to satisfy, I don't know, some constituents out there. I don't know what it was. But at least take time during the regular session where there's months to deliberate. There's months for our people to get all their sides represented equally, and then how to handle this problem. After a law is passed, you recreate rulemaking authority. There was no rulemaking authority created with this. So now we've got the turkey in our laps to try to figure out what it is. And it's put us all just into a tizzy. I heard two things from the opponents of the moratorium, and the last hearing we heard was, well, this is just about medical marijuana. It has nothing to do with the legalization of marijuana. That's fine. But then I also heard today, well, it's going to be legal anyway, so what's the difference? So I hear conflicting testimony from the opponents who want to do this. So, and I realize all people are different, and their views are different, so which is it? Is it about legalizing marijuana or is it about medical marijuana? I do am, I am extremely troubled with our youth and the increased drug use. I do think it comes from these facilities of people with cards, maybe not so much the business owners. And there might be some, obviously, responsible users out there, but hey, it's getting out there, just like alcohol gets out there, just like anything. I have read tons of stuff, and I still don't have questions answered. I read reports from the AMA do not support this, reports from the American Psychiatric Association on brain development in children. Those are very, very real concerns that are not addressed here today because it's not our job to address that. It was not addressed in the legislature, anything else. When you talk about education, I asked two, I asked a really important question today that I didn't get an answer of. You guys want to come educate us? I asked you a question. Well, I guess it wasn't really, what's the shelf life of this or that or that? So all you folks out there, Dan, who has this, and you folks, you know, I was hoping to get a real, concrete answer. But Dan Houston has a laboratory and he has a facility. I would like to go out and visit that and learn more about it, see what the to-do is on practical applications or this part of it or this part of that. This is a topic that I still believe with my heart that an overwhelming majority of society does not approve of. And it's a huge social experiment, and I'm not willing to take Oregon in whatever capacity I have as an elected person to put many, many people, innocent people, at risk for a social experiment that we don't know the results of. Now, the governor of Colorado, who signed the bill to legalize marijuana, says it was probably the worst decision in my life that we did this because there are problems. And I know you folks disagree with me, and you don't need to voice that further. That's fine. But as my charge, I'm going to support the moratorium, but I am going to continue in my efforts to put safeguards on it for our youth, safeguards on it for any other users out there who think that it's wrong. And we're going to move forward in a very thoughtful manner on this. It's very difficult for us. We have one charge today. Either establish time, place, and manner, which I'm not willing to do today, or establish a moratorium. And like at least 16 counties in Oregon and over 100 cities who have done this, we will follow suit. We will convene with all of our cities through the League of Oregon Cities, through the Association of Oregon Counties to try to get a handle on this and figure out in a cohesive, consistent manner what every city and every county can do. So if somebody crosses a city boundary or a county line, you're not breaking some law over here when you're thinking you're over here. I mean, there's nothing worse than that, in my opinion. So I'm going to support the moratorium today, and thank you for coming.
Commissioner Savas.
So I agree with a lot of what my colleagues have said here today, and I found some of the testimony compelling. I certainly want to be able to look a little bit deeper into the federal prescription thing that I believe Mr. Mullins had brought up. And I think that where we are today is that this law allows us by May 1st only to do this prior to May 1st or the day of May 1st. So we can't really do this after the fact. So our ability to do something today allows us an opportunity to have the time, and it can be less than a year or if the counties or in the cities can come up with a cohesive, consistent regulation or so forth to do this. So this, you know, we're in a spot here. We need to take advantage of that state law, that state opportunity with passing this moratorium. So I too will be supporting the moratorium. I do want to say that from my understanding, I think that, I think some of them, some of the dispensaries that are legitimate in place today actually have a little bit of an advantage, and that advantage being is that should the moratorium be lifted in that period of time, there will be no competing or rush of or expansion of a number of competitive dispensaries. So there is somewhat of advantage. I know that there's a disadvantage of that too, so I'm not saying it's all good. I'm not going to pretend that it is all good. Some people have said this is political. I don't think it is political. As a matter of fact, I believe my opponent, opponents, Commissioner Bernard's opponents, all support the moratorium as well. So this is not a political matter. This is something that will allow the state and the associations to work out a consistent regulation to cope with this. So I'll be supporting this.
You know, I think few of us up here have any doubt that marijuana does good for some people. But marijuana, like all drugs, affect people in different ways. There's no guarantee how cannabis, cannabis sativa, will affect anybody. And it is an experiment in a lot of ways, and I certainly appreciate the doctor's testimony. Here's a medical provider who believes, knows, knows, not just believes, probably through his evidence, that it does make a difference for some people. We know this is a great inconvenience that we would do this, and certainly it is available to other people by other means, including currently Multnomah County. Is it my turn to talk, or you want to do it?
No, I think I'll talk. You know, my wife and I have been in every startup this business.
All right, then we're going to do it. Recessed, recessed. Ladies and gentlemen, I know you'll be taking us on through letter and the press, but go ahead and do that, and don't disrupt the meeting, please. You know, the child part, you've heard a lot of testimony about the perception of harm. Now, we, again, we know we're talking about medical marijuana here. Medical, I wouldn't call it marijuana. Medical cannabis extracts, probably. But, you know, the perception of harm in youth has continued to drop numbers. Kids don't think it's any big deal, and there's a reason for that. One of the people testified said, we need to educate parents. We do. We really do. Because the parents also feel a very low expectation of harm. And the more education we get about, out to people about possible brain, I mean, I have articles here, we all have articles about how it affects people, and we have a great experiment going on. It's called Washington and Colorado. Not everybody here, regardless of how he got it, heard about the child in Colorado, 16-year-old that ate a whole brownie instead of an eighth each, and he jumped off a balcony to his death. So there is abuse out there. You know, you know what? What is it? Is it that? Is it again? Ladies and gentlemen, we will take another recess until I get control of the meeting. Thank you. Yes, she'll be back. You've heard me talk before. Well, welcome back again to the viewing public. I think now that people have understood their time is over and it's our time. Los Angeles County District Attorney, among other things, said as follows. "Our empirical evidence proves that storefront pot shops are merely fronts for drug dealing." You know, he's talking about medical marijuana here. Drug, this is from the neighborhood. I should say, this is District Attorney for Los Angeles. "I am in unique position of having observed firsthand the proliferation of illegal storefront pot shops in Los Angeles and the numerous and ongoing detrimental effects it has created for the cities and communities across California." Again, it's not what comes in the front door. It's what goes out the back. I'm not accusing anybody, any of you gentlemen and ladies who own facilities at all. I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying time, place, and manner, time, place, and manner will be addressed, as Tudi has said, and we all agree. There should be some uniformity. Commissioner Savas said the same thing. Time, place, and manner. Anything that we say as reasonings to not currently just open them up has been said by the 110 cities and 24 and 28, 24 counties. Everything, every reason has been said, and by the way, probably the same reasoning of why we shouldn't do this has also been said to these people through testimony. But the point of the matter is, is we have no controls because we were left in the lurch by the legislature. And so we have to take some handle of this. We will not make a decision on time, place, and manner in a vacuum. I said before, we'll reach out, whether it's roundtable discussions or small forums. We will take the input from people who decided to be decorious today and may continue to do so. We're looking for that. Several commissioners want to view these operations, see how they operate, and that's good too. There has to be some uniformity across the state because, like you say, you drive from one city to the county, that's different than you driving to the next city, and it's different. So we need some uniformity. We also need to know that the legislature is not going to change this in their 2015 legislative period. So again, I think one of the other people, I think it was Mike McCausch, who said, citing these is a land use issue, and it is, because there's an old adage that says, your rights end where mine begin. And so citing in neighborhoods obviously is out. There is some commercial and industrial. I know in Marion County, they adopted that. It could be in commercial and industrial. But certainly there's a right way to fit these in if we are required to have them. And I'm not so sure we are required to have them. You know, the last time the public voted on medical marijuana dispensaries, they voted no. And yet, here we are again, I think it's two years later, and the legislature said we, this public just didn't know how to take care of this. Now they've left it in our hands. So again, there's a lot of reasons why I keep going by, and I don't mean to use this as a crotch, but it is a children, isn't it? You know, there's no doubt in my mind that marijuana or any drug will more adversely affect youth with undeveloped brains than it would adults. I personally don't care if a 40-year-old, 30-year-old, whatever, you know, wanted to smoke marijuana. I don't care. I do care of what it sends as a message to children, especially children. I'm going to use that to some, as some excuse to vote the way I'm going to vote because we have to get a hold of this, and there will be, as one of the other people testified, there will be a ripple effect of costs here. This is, this is not just go ahead, everything's going to be groovy. We're going to have to put more, more money into prevention, especially with our youth, for treatment. We're going to put more money into law enforcement. We're going to do some prosecutions specifically after. Now, this is after we go through time, place, and manner. It's been said that the Oregon Health Department only has, authority only has, like four or six employees. I don't know how they're going to handle 200-plus stores that may open throughout the state of Oregon. I know this is an unpopular decision to some of you. This is a timeout, ladies and gentlemen. A timeout so that we can get our ducks in a row and certainly analyze the effect these will have on our community and our society and certainly our children. So that said, commissioners, anything more? Oh, we ought to, I'm looking for a motion.
Martha's letter.
Oh, excuse me, I did not do that, and I had it right here in front of me. Commissioner Martha Schrader, as I said, was not able to be here today. She's meeting with the governor. "I, Commissioner Martha Schrader, am unable to attend today's business meeting on April 24, 2014 to discuss, excuse me, and vote on the issue of medical marijuana dispensaries. I have an excuse to represent the county in a meeting with Governor Kitzhobbin and a large private company interested in investing in the region for which Clackamas County plays a great role. Noting the significance of today's decision, I want to reflect my sentiments on the matter, that my desire is for Clackamas County to be a place where businesses can come and flourish and where entrepreneurs are welcomed to brave new frontiers. Medical marijuana dispensaries present complicated questions regarding county land use, business code violations, community impacts, and conflicting federal and state regulations. I believe that no decision made today will satisfy all parties, but encourage my colleagues to pursue a one-year moratorium on dispensaries. I believe this moratorium will provide Clackamas County sufficient time to answer the questions of land use, code violations, community impacts, and legal regulations. With the answers to these questions, I am hopeful that we can produce appropriate time, place, and manner regulations on medical marijuana dispensaries that meet both the community needs and the economic desires of Clackamas County." Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move we adopt ordinance number 01...
We have to read it by title only first.
Oh, oh.
Oh, I move we read ordinance number 01-2014 by title only.
Is there a second?
I'll second them.
A motion made by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Savas. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas. Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes 4-0. And now, the motion asks the clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, ordinance number 01-2014, and ordinance amending Title VI, Public Protection of the Clackamas County Code, and adding Chapter 6.12, declaring an moratorium on medical marijuana facilities and declaring an emergency.
Okay, and now, just a question of our legal counsel. This part does include declaring an emergency, and that would go into force and effect when we pass this, correct?
On passage, that's correct.
And that would be by unanimous vote only? Is that correct?
Not for second reading.
Not for this second reading, for first readings only. Okay, just checking on that. Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? Mary would take the poll, please.
Don't we?
Yeah, someone needs to make a motion.
I move we adopt ordinance number 01-2014, amending Title VI, Public Protection, Clackamas County Code, and adding Section 6.12, declaring a moratorium on medical marijuana facilities and declaring emergency.
I'll second that. Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Savas. Messed up my script, didn't I? All right, any further discussion on the motion at hand? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes 4-0. So now it brings us to the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of a revenue intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Health Authority for the Todos Graduados, Everybody Graduates Prevention Project, approval of an agency services contract with Compass Group USA Inc., doing business as Bateman Senior Meals for Food Services for five Clackamas County Older American Act Nutrition Program meal sites. Approval of Amendment Number One to the intergovernmental agreement.
They were here.
It's not on the thing, just one second. Sorry about that.
Still nothing. Oh, there it is.
You guys got it now?
Yeah.
Okay. Approval of an agency services contract with Compass, you already did that one. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Lakoswego, Toowallatin Valley Fire and Rescue, and Clackamas Fire District Number One for the Advanced Life Support Emergency Medical Systems Integration, under elected officials' approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under the Department of Emergency Management, we have approval of fiscal year 2011 Urban Area Security Initiative Intergovernmental Agreement Amendment Number Two with the City of Portland. Approval of fiscal year 2011 Urban Area Security Initiative Intergovernmental Local Grant Agreement with Boring Water District Number 64. And approval of Amendment Number One of the Subrecipient Grant Agreement Number 14007 with Clackamas River Water. And under the Development Agency, we have approval of an easement, of an easement to Portland General Electric Company on agency-owned property located on 10910 Southeast 82nd Avenue. And that concludes the consent agenda.
All right. So, and ask for a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Bernard making the motion, Commissioner Savas seconding. Any further discussion? You want to pull anything from the consent agenda? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes 4-0. Mr. Cr, time for the county administrator update.
Well, you know, I think given the late hour, I am going to forego that this week.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, we'll start with Commissioner Savas.
Chair Ludlow, I think due to the late hour, I think I will keep my comments for next week.
All right. All right, you two.
Well, I'm going to ditto that. Thank you, Mr. Savas. I'll follow suit.
I'm going to go on for hours.
(laughing).
No, I just want to say that.
I'm going to sheriff, I mean it.
I just want to say that this was a tough discussion. I know, I know that there are medical reasons why and there are benefits to the distribution of cannabis in medical facilities. I'm not sure I agree that marijuana should ever be legalized. I think it's a, it, it is a problem that we will all be facing in the future and one that I don't think we have the forces, the police forces, the sheriff's forces, to resolve the potential criminality that could occur in the future should marijuana be legalized. And like I said, there's a, there is a great experiment in two states that we can look to and let them learn the lessons. It's rare that you have that opportunity. So I appreciate that. And I am going to be heading down to the Sheriff's Child Abuse Summit. The sheriff has worked really hard to put child abuse in front of everybody so that they, they realize that this is a huge problem that needs to be addressed. And thanks to the sheriff's hard work, we have a place right over there and a number, a number of facilities in Clackamas County that will help address this issue.
We, you're absolutely right, Jim. You know, we know that child abuse is intergenerational. Its values are caught, not taught. So is criminality, and ladies and gentlemen, so is drug addiction. It runs in families. It becomes intergenerational. Today, all I will say in addition to that is that we have a town hall coming up, September 10th, Estacada City Hall from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. at 475 Southeast Main Street. Estacada is hosted by the Estacada Chamber of Commerce.
September? Coming up?
September 10th.
Well.
Well, it is our next one coming up. I didn't say how far away it was. Come on. You talk longer and you take shots.
I better start going because I want to be on time.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, there being no further business before this commission, this meeting is adjourned.